Invite you at this time to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much again for joining us this evening. We will move on to the budget hearing. Actually, we've, is Russ Knapp, I think we've already had that during the work session.
He's disappeared toward the back, so, no, he needs to present as well.
Okay. Mr. Knapp, would you join us, please? We're following the agenda here.
This is the budget hearing just for the current budget 2013-14, where men in the budget for special ed fund and the capital outlay fund. The capital outlay fund is just to give us additional authority when we did the Apple initiative.
Very good. Any questions?
This truly is the chance for the public to speak if they have something to say.
Okay, if anyone joined us this evening regarding the budget hearing, at this time you may come forward. Thank you, Mr. Knapp. I don't think you have any questions for you. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Henson.
Thank you, Mrs. Zeele. I have several things for you. First of all, I would like to call Linda Roser to the microphone. She has a special presentation for us tonight. So as you know, Linda is the executive director of the Shawnee Mission Education Foundation. Thanks, Linda.
Thank you, Dr. Henson, and thank you, Board of Education. Two years ago, to mark the 50th anniversary of Shawnee Mission West, the Shawnee Mission West Alumni Fund was established at the foundation to invest in current and future generations of Shawnee Mission West students. Tonight, it is my privilege to introduce the Shawnee Mission West Senior Class President, Marleah Campbell, who will make the first contribution to the Shawnee Mission West Alumni Fund from the class of 2014. Marleah?
Hi, again, I'm Marleah Campbell. I'm the senior class president at Shawnee Mission West for the class of 2014. I'd like to thank you for having me today. So, at the beginning of the semester, we were trying to come up with a gift to honor Andre Maloney, who was a classmate of ours who passed away October 4th. In coming up with the gift, we had a lot of ideas floating around, but we knew that we wanted to honor Andre. So we came up with two ideas, and we have two gifts for our class. Andre was known for lighting up the football field, but he was a lot more than that. He was a natural leader, and he led by example. He was kind, compassionate, and selfless. Our first gift is a sign by the athletic facilities that will say, "Home of the Vikings, MIB." MIB is Andre's mantra, and it stands for "Make It Big," which has inspired many and is part of Andre's legacy. MIB is a huge part of West Athletics. I was on the girls' basketball team, and we break down every huddle with MIB. We ride on our shoes. The boys did it as well, and almost every team breaks it down with MIB. And you can see it written on shoes, cleats, and wrists. This sign is a great way to honor Andre for years to come, and it'll stand in an area which he loved and frequently went to, of course, the football field. The second part of the gift is why I'm here tonight, which, with the remainder of our fund, we are donating $1,500 to the Shawnee Mission West Alumni Fund. And for us, it's a great way to honor Andre by donating the money to a fund that will benefit the students, faculty, and the school as a whole for years to come. So, thank you.
Marleah, thank you so very much. This is a really great tribute for Andre, I'm sure, and, you know, he will be thought about for a long, long time from this gift, from this gift and from the gift of the signage. I think that's wonderful. Did you have something to add to this?
I do.
Okay.
This is a young lady that graduated this year, and so she's heard this before if she was paying attention during graduation. We'll see. One of the neat things about the foundation is it allows us to pay it forward. And one of my favorite quotes is that from Winston Churchill, which is, "We make a living by what we get, but we make a life by what we give." And a donation like this, in Andre's memory and to the West alumni, is very much appreciated, but it demonstrates to me the character of West High School. So, thank you. Now, Linda, you can't leave just yet. You can go. Some of you may know that I work for an engineering firm, Terricon. And I was fortunate enough to receive a grant from the Terricon Foundation for Project Lead the Way in our district. And so, Linda, I'm pleased to give you another check tonight from the Terricon Foundation.
Thank you very much.
This is an exciting grant that we have received. This is going to be purchasing equipment for the brand-new civil engineering program that is starting up in the fall. It's an additional class as part of the Project Lead the Way program. So, thank you very much.
Certainly, that's an exciting way to highlight great things are happening in the Shawnee Mission School District. As you are very keenly aware, we just had all of our high school graduations. We had nearly 2,000 students that graduated from our high schools. Our students were awarded over $47 million in scholarships. And so certainly, it was a great year of celebration in relation to not only the accomplishments of our students, but also recognizing, you can see some of the pictures now, recognizing the support of our family and friends through this process. And so actually, there are seven graduations that occur in the Shawnee Mission School District. As you know, we had six a couple of weeks ago, two each night, but we also had graduation last week for 18- to 21-year-olds in that program, and so that was a wonderful event. So congratulations certainly to all of our graduates and certainly to their family and friends for all of their support. We also have tonight recognition of several Shawnee Mission students that were honored last week at the Blue Star Awards Ceremony at the Starlight Theater. So, East student Maddie Roberts was named Outstanding Actress in a lead role for her performance in Shrek the Musical. Shawnee Mission East's production of Shrek was honored the Outstanding Costume Design and Construction Tier 2. And Elizabeth Brooks from Northwest was honored with the Outstanding Artistic Contribution by a Student Award and received a Rising Star Scholarship. Multiple nominees from various of our high schools also were recognized at this metro-wide event. At another ceremony, several of our schools, nine to be specific, were recognized for the support of character education. These awards were given as a part of the Kansas Schools of Character Recognition Program. So Apache, Hocker Grove, Rising Star, Rushton, Chihuahua, Shawnee Mission North, Sunflower, Tom Hock, and West Ridge earned recognition by demonstrating various principles of character through successful implementation of effective programs in schools. And so again, congratulations to these nine schools. Shawnee Mission West Senior Jessie Saylor was named the winner of the 2014 Third District Congressional Art Competition for her work in photography. She submitted this as a part of national competition, and her artwork will be on display in the halls of the U.S. Capitol Visitor Center for one year. Also, a team of students from Indian Woods Middle School represented the state of Kansas this past weekend in the First Annual National Academic Competition. They placed fourth overall in the nation, and three team members received top rankings in their specific category divisions. So, great accomplishments certainly by our students, by our employees as well. And we wanted to take the time to highlight just a few of the many accomplishments this last school year and certainly most recently in this month. Also want to share with you tonight some revisions to our staffing guidelines. So as you understand, the administration sets staffing guidelines, and this is a class size range. And so I'm announcing to you tonight, I've made some changes in the staff guidelines. So this is hopefully, notice hopefully, step one of a process. One of the things that we've heard very loud and clearly is that class size is important to the patrons of our district. So step one, and again, as we look at step two, we heard a budget presentation earlier tonight. We are not anticipating any additional revenue for the following school year, 15-16. That only boils down to reallocation of resources. So currently, our K-1 guidelines are 16-26, our 2-3 are 17-29, and our 4-6 are 18-30. So when we start back to school in August, K-2 guidelines will go to 16-24. So K-1 is going from 26 ceiling to a ceiling of 24. Second grade is going from a ceiling of 29 down to 24. Third grade still remains far too large. Again, we're at step one, and 4 through 6 is too large as well. But we have to deal with those really in two fashions. So as we look at the guidelines for this next year in K-2, so we're decreasing second grade by five. We're decreasing K-1 by two students max. We have these teachers that we've built into the budget. So as you know, we built 10 additional teachers into the budget for class size. We also built five additional teachers into the budget. These are new positions that we built into the budget this year if we have parents requested for more sections of full-day kindergarten. And so right now, we don't have five requests, five additional section requests. So we have teachers built into the budget to meet these class size guidelines. And so these will go into effect when we resume in school in August. Now, a couple of caveats. We have at least a couple of schools, based on our projections, that do not have any additional classrooms. And so we can only reduce class size to these ranges in buildings where we have available classrooms. And so we'll watch that very carefully. The second, the real cutoff date is September 20, our annual count day. So if we're going to have any additional classrooms, we would like to do it very early in the school year. The only caveat after September 20 is those things that you can't predict, which would be very unusual. But let's say, you know, in November and December, we had 10 students that moved into a specific grade level in a specific building, and then we'll work with those parents and buildings, if we have available space, to say, "Do we make a change a semester, or do we not make a change a semester?" So these are new staffing guidelines that are in place, and again, we budgeted for these. And so that is occurring. We are also, and as you know, the annual process, so we have the watch list in relation to class size, and so we have several that we know that already meet the max, but we have several through grade 6 that are on the watch list, trying to see what occurs. So we either have or are finishing employing all of those individuals, but some of them will not have their final placements until we know exactly how some things shake out over the summer. It's easier to predict in some buildings than others because of the rate of transition of students and families. And so we have quite a few classrooms right now, grade levels, that are on that watch list. That's a great problem, but again, one of the quandaries, some buildings, we don't have available classrooms. So that'll be something that we will put a procedure in place that every fall, that we will be reviewing those projections and those class sizes in building capacities as well, because certainly we have some issues. Dr. Denny?
No, you addressed the issue that I inquired about, which is the building capacity.
Do you have something on that, Mrs. Levens?
No.
Okay.
Sounds like a great plan. Thank you.
Also, as you are aware, and you will deal with part of this issue a little later, in relation to transfers. And so an administrative decision is in relation to transfers. So as you know, I've announced that the transfers into Briarwood and Brookridge will be returned to their home building, or they can request a transfer to another building as well as we try to deal with capacity. In relation to Briarwood, we've also announced that that program will transition out of Briarwood in a year. That will allow us to be able to make the adjustments that we need to make with ELL certification, endorsement for teachers, and some of those issues. So as I've looked at the issue, really, there are a couple of things that are very significant factors and priority. One is if you currently live in the attendance boundary, you have to take priority. Secondly, which impacts transfers. Secondly, if we have a district program that we can move, that we will move that program out of a building to a building that has capacity. In relation to ELL at Briarwood, that's a transition again in relation to that endorsement for ELL teachers. And we heard a presentation about that tonight earlier in the work session in relation to the impact of that endorsement. So at Briarwood, transfers that are coming in, also ELL is in transition back in a year. We will also continue to monitor enrollment very carefully. Was in a different meeting today on a different school, and we were talking about re-greening of neighborhoods. That's really difficult to predict. Again, it's a great issue for us to face, and so we're not having conversations about closing schools, but we're having conversations about buildings that are already at capacity or overcapacity, and how do we deal with those issues? In relation to Brookridge, we cannot reduce the class size appropriately or the building capacity without making a boundary change. So that is on the agenda tonight, and we'll deal with that a little later under action items. Would like to note that this week, as you know, our teachers are still working this week. We have technology training that's going on this week. So I met with a group of teachers this afternoon. They believed it went extremely well. Of course, one of those teachers is one of the teachers providing the training. And so, but she thought it went really well. But really want to commend all of our staff. This is a very significant undertaking, the training going on over the next several days. And so it's a great accomplishment certainly for our teachers, but also all of those individuals that are our employees that are providing the training. This is a major undertaking, and if you are one of the peers of the individuals, and all of a sudden you're providing the training to them in relation to technology, that could be just a little stressful. But our personnel have really been doing a great job of handling this issue. And again, what an exciting time. So that's what I have for you tonight, Mrs. Zeele. Under my report, a lot more action yet to occur.
Yes, there is. Thank you very much, Dr. Henson. Okay, we will move on to open forum. I will just address that our rules concerning open forum, addressing the board. At the beginning of each regular business meeting, the Board of Education provides an open forum as an opportunity for public comment on school district issues. Agendas are published in advance to notify the community of the topics under consideration. Patron comments are welcome, but those wishing to speak to an issue not included in the agenda will usually not receive a response during the meeting. I think we have just five speakers tonight. If you could limit your comments to about five minutes, that would be great. If it's over just slightly there, I won't stop you, but I'd just be cognizant of, we have five speakers, okay? And our first speaker is Kirsten Byrd.
Good evening. My name is Kirsten Byrd, and I am here because I have three children enrolled at Briarwood Elementary School. And I respectfully disagree with the superintendent's recommendation to try to address overcrowding at Briarwood. I was here before the board back in September 2013, and I presented the materials that I have attached for you again at Tab A in your booklet. Those are documents that I pulled directly from the school district's website or the Kansas Department of Education's website. And those documents told all of us that over the last five years, the enrollment at Briarwood Elementary School has consistently, each and every year, grown substantially. In 2010, enrollment was 508. 2011, 521. 2012, 535. 2013, 565. And 2014, the official enrollment as of September 20th was 590. Over the course of the year, it crept up to 595. The documents also showed that the classroom sizes experienced at Briarwood, 27, 28, 29, in the case of my daughter, over 30 in third grade, is highly atypical for this school district. The average class size in the school district, according to the district's own documents, is just 21 students, and that's across all grades. The district commissioned a report by an independent demographer who had no relationship to anyone here. The key excerpts from the demographer's report are at Tab B in your materials. The demographer reported that overall, the buildings in the districts are underutilized. They are under capacity, and in some cases substantially under capacity. But the demographer raised red flags for three buildings of 43 total buildings in the district. Briarwood was one. But when you look at the document I have in Tab B that lists every single building in the district, the demographer assumed current enrollment at 569 students. We know that's incorrect. Look at Tab C of your book. This is a document I pulled directly from the district's website that showed enrollment in 2013 and 14 was at 590 in September. So the demographer raised a red flag. You're over capacity at Briarwood. But the demographer did not know, you are seriously over capacity at Briarwood. I know that increase in enrollment and re-greening may be difficult to predict, but the demographer addressed this for Briarwood. He told you what to predict. Look at Tab B. Next page, I've underlined it. He told you, Briarwood Elementary is very dramatic because of the large growth of its younger classes. The pattern in 2012 through 2013 was very similar. Hence, the three-year model projects continued growth at this school. How much? Turn to the last page in Tab B. The demographer has told you what to expect. The demographer predicts that between the 13-14 school year and the 14-15 school year, organic growth in enrollment at this school will be 50 students. So, we have parents consistently raising the alarm about overcrowding. You have an independent demographer raising a red flag and telling you, "You're over capacity, and it's only going to get worse." Dr. Henson's proposal does not get us there. There are only 32 total transfer students at Briarwood. Of those, six are eligible to remain as sixth graders to complete their years there. So we're only talking 26 students who will potentially be disenrolled from this school. So if you assume enrollment at 595, that's what we ended the school year at, add the 50 that the demographer has told you you're going to get, subtract the 26 impacted by the transfer policy, you're still at 619. Way over capacity. Security, education, all compromised. I received from the school district, class size projections for Briarwood. You may have received the same thing. They are at Tab D in your book. I added these up. The district reports it is projecting 565 students at Briarwood next year. First of all, that's still over capacity, according to the demographer's report. Second of all, this estimate doesn't count the ELL kids. The ELL kids count. They count. And this assumes no growth, which your demographer has told you in no uncertain terms is going to happen. It's happened each and every year. This board's mission, I looked at your website, is comprehensive education in a secure environment that fosters respect among students and the community. And I don't think the superintendent's recommendation falls within any of those guideposts. If the district is not willing to change boundaries, the district needs to stand behind each and every one of the kids at Briarwood the next school year, and the teachers at Briarwood, who are teaching overly large class sizes not experienced anywhere in the school district. I'm calling for more teachers, addition of physical capacity to house all these kids through trailers. We cannot go another year. I'm going into my third year with this message to administration and the board, and I ask you to please act.
Our next speaker is Rochelle Hesterly.
Good evening. My name is Rochelle Hesterly. My husband and I are 15-year residents of Lenexa. We have twin daughters that are nine years old, and they attend Mill Creek Elementary, and will be in the fourth grade in the fall. We are weekly volunteers at the school. We are annual room parents and actively involved in the PTA. I come here tonight as a concerned parent, representing the concerns of all the Mill Creek parents in the room tonight as well. We know that the 59 children, our 59 children, will be placed into two large classrooms in the fall, 29 and 30 kids to a room. We know that our class size is being watched by the district throughout the summer. We know that 10 teachers have been hired and have not been assigned. We also know that if we get to 61 kids this summer, we will have a third class. This is what we know. It's what we don't know, nor can the district articulate, that is concerning to us. Over the last week, parents have expressed their concerns to many of you. The messages back to the parents were consistent and provided no assurance that you are preparing the teachers and the facilities for these large class sizes. The district has missed an opportunity to provide the parents the assurance needed that this decision is not going to impact our children's education. When asked, the district is unable to clearly articulate if there have been other instances of a fourth-grade class in the district that have been at that maximum 30 kids to a class. The Mill Creek fourth-grade class shouldn't be your guinea pig. The district is also unable to demonstrate any follow-up research or analysis that's been done since those class size guidelines were increased four years ago. Without hesitation, district representatives pointed back to state funding issues, when in fact, our neighboring districts, they're having the same funding issues, yet their teacher-to-student ratios are lower. The Shawnee Mission School Districts, we have great teachers. We need to retain our teachers and be in a strong position to recruit new ones. Higher qualified teachers are drawn to districts with smaller class sizes. Larger class sizes increases the risk. Larger class sizes increases the risk that our own current families move to neighboring districts or seek private school options. I shared with my daughters the possibility of these two class sizes in the fall. I asked their opinion and what the impact they see in their learning in the classroom. My Melena, nine-year-old, response, her response was insightful and one that I did not anticipate. She articulated clearly that currently in a classroom of 19, she may need to wait four to five deep at the teacher's desk for help. If there are 10 more kids, mommy, in the room, she will be standing in a longer line, and she may not get the help she needs. Her other point was, that she made, was just as discouraging. She recognizes that she needs extra time to gain the courage to speak and communicate her opinion and get her questions or her answers out. She said in a larger classroom, my teacher won't have the time to wait for me to talk, and I may be skipped over. As a parent, this is heartbreaking. I do not want the opportunity to teach to each individual child to be lost or sacrificed. I, along with the other Mill Creek parents, respectfully request that the current configuration of the Mill Creek fourth grade class be further evaluated by the district. We also request that a more permanent solution be identified, as other classrooms at Mill Creek are facing a similar fate, and we do not wish to repeat this process annually. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kelly Demo.
Mom, I love school, but sometimes the room is too noisy. I feel we're all scrunched together. I miss my old school, where it felt smaller and I was learning more. Lots of desks in a room make me anxious. I know fourth grade is going to be harder, and I'm scared I won't be able to keep up with everyone in my class. Sometimes it's hard for my questions to be noticed or answered. I believe that to a person, every single one of you got into the positions that you're in, in the jobs that you're in, because you believe in the power of a good education. I know, I know that you want what's best for every single kid, and that's why I thought you would want to hear from one of those kids. But did you catch those words and phrases? All scrunched together. Anxious. Scared. Hard to be noticed. This is one of those little kids in the upcoming fourth grade class at Mill Creek, who is really smart, but who has some extra needs. And this is my primary concern as we discuss class sizes. One person can lecture to a group of 30 kids. One very gifted and experienced teacher may be able to meet some and even most of the needs of most of the children. But what about that kid who needs to be challenged, who finishes their work quickly? Are they just to be handed a book and told to go read quietly? Well, where's the challenge in that? What about the child with diabetes, who sometimes lets their blood sugar slip? And if they're not noticed by their teacher, they can become quickly critical. Or the one whose home life is falling apart, but their response is to withdraw into themselves and become quiet. Or worse yet, their anger turns outward, and they become violent. And what about the little guy who tries he might, and despite the thousands of dollars that his parents have spent on extra tutoring, still needs help to read because he's one of the 20% of children in the school who's dyslexic? In an email that I received from someone in the district, she indicated that for these children, the IEP students, the 504 students, teachers have, the special ed teachers have the quote, "knowledge and capability to meet any special needs." And of course, that is true. We at Mill Creek, we have a wonderful special ed teacher. We have a great ELL program. But my son's special needs and the special needs of all of these kids, and we have a lot, it doesn't end when they walk out of the special ed room and into the regular classroom. That's where the real needs begin. So how can one teacher, no matter how good that teacher is, really meet all of those needs? We have outstanding teachers at Mill Creek, and we want to free them to be able to teach and not just manage our kids. Now, I've been told through many copy and paste emails that the districts, we are on the district's watch list for this year. And so I am asking you, as you watch these numbers, as you watch the numbers 28, 29, 30, please keep in mind just the number one. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chris Grallop.
Good evening. I too am a Mill Creek parent. I've got three kids. One of them just completed sixth grade. Another one is in the, is a future fourth grader, and we also have a future kindergartner. By my job and by my own nature, I'm going to look at this at a slightly different perspective. I fully agree with the comments that have been made by Rochelle and Kelly Demo about the challenges that are set forth for kids in class sizes of 30. What Mill Creek situation is, is that a lot of our grades are right at that point where they're at between two and three sections. If they're at two, then we're talking about large class sizes, as we're talking about with the fourth grade at 29 or 30. Going in before Dr. Henson's message tonight, we've got a kindergarten, or future first graders who are at, who are at 57 kids. So next, before the announcement, they were looking at 29 kids a year from now. These issues aren't going away. The Mill Creek community is very stable. My son's fourth grade class entered the district at 64. There was a boundary adjustment, took a few kids out, they dropped them to 57. Today, they're at 59. So as you can see, there's not a lot of movement occurring in that grade. So whether we get an extra teacher or not this year, the problem's still going to be here next year and the year after. Same with the first graders. What needs to change at Mill Creek is the size of Mill Creek needs to change. It was mentioned that we could deny transfers at Mill Creek, and we could reduce the size. In particular, the fourth grade, we could reduce that from 59 to 49, get the class sizes down to 25. And that's absolutely not what we want. The schools already have a part-time librarian, a part-time art teacher. Their specials are all, the teachers are only in the building part of the time. Decreasing our enrollment further will reduce the time that those people are in, at our school. So in my opinion, what Mill Creek needs is more students. We have several underutilized classrooms at Mill Creek, as the first parent that spoke tonight talked about the study the demographer did, the demographics and enrollment projection study. That study pegged Mill Creek had seven empty classrooms. I would tend to say that they have even more than seven empty classrooms at the school. To the north of Mill Creek's attendance area is Benninghoven, the only school in the district that the, that the demographic study said is overcapacity, when you use the standard of 110 square feet per student. They're at 86 square feet per student, so 27% overcapacity. Rising Star is a school to the south of Mill Creek. That is also another school that's kind of not overcapacity, wasn't identified as a red school, but it was identified in the next five years to become a yellow school, a school that's kind of a school that needs to be watched. So in my opinion, boundary discussions should begin immediately. When I've raised this issue with district staff, what I have been told is that no boundary discussions will occur until the new Siawana was built. And that seems absolutely backwards to me. You should, instead of building a school and then figuring out who should go into that school, you should figure out who's going to go to that school, so you can design that school to meet their needs. And while it's too late to do that, it's not too late to begin boundary adjustments to create good, positive learning environments at the schools such as Benninghoven and Rising Star. So I encourage you to, again, I know boundaries are painful and things that boards don't like to deal with. I deal with that in my job with the Olathe School District, but I think it's something, as you're hearing from parents tonight, it's something that the district really needs to take a look at throughout the whole district. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our last speaker tonight is Chris Muehlberger.
Good evening, and thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Chris Muehlberger. I am married to Katie, and we are the parents of two Briarwood students, Mac and Charlie. I'm also an attorney. I'm here to briefly discuss how we feel the superintendent's decision to remove transfer students from Briarwood simultaneously fails to solve the school's overcrowding problem and is wrong from a legal and equitable point of view. Mac is a soon-to-be sixth grader, and Charlie will be in third grade. Mac was a first grader at Briarwood when we moved three blocks outside the Briarwood boundary. Wanting Mac to continue going to school with his friends and impressed with the Briarwood staff and community, we applied for a transfer and were granted one. When Charlie got to kindergarten, we again applied for a transfer and were granted one. I want to reiterate that we followed the transfer process as legitimized by the district, and we did not seek a transfer to avoid any particular school. We simply wanted our boys to remain with the Briarwood community that we had become invested in financially, emotionally, socially, and perennially. After the boys' transfers were approved by the district, we received a letter from the district explaining that the transfer was in effect for the remainder of the boys' elementary education. In fact, the language reads as follows. "The transfer is good for their elementary school years at Briarwood as long as academic attendance and behavior guidelines are met." Where am I on the page? The letter says nothing about the district's ability or power to remove transfers based on overcrowding issues, nor does it even suggest that the decision is subject to change by the superintendent or school board. Had the district told us that the transfer was only valid for one year, or that it was subject to change at any time by the superintendent or school board, we could have evaluated at that time whether it made better sense to move our children to another school. Instead, we relied on the plain language of the letter, and in the interim, our children have made friends, participated in sports and clubs with those friends, while Katie and I became active in PTA, scouts, and coaching, as well as financially supporting the school and PTA through seemingly unlimited fundraising opportunities. In legal terms, this kind of reliance on a promise is called detrimental reliance. And at the risk of getting all law school professor on you, I want to just explain this as part of a legal concept called promissory estoppel. Under this concept, the party relying on the promise has to show that a promise was made, that the party making the promise could have reasonably foreseen that the promise would induce reliance, and that it would be unfair to not enforce this promise. In our situation, we have a written promise in the form of the letter that was, that clearly induced significant reliance on our part. I am appealing to you, the board, to recognize the fundamental unfairness of this decision and to reverse it. In addition to this fairness issue, I also want to briefly and respectfully remind the board that this decision does not come close to solving Briarwood's overcrowding problem. As Mrs. Byrd explained eloquently, this decision does not solve the problem. I was approached by a Briarwood teacher just last week who said that several teachers at the school were upset because the decision actually makes their classrooms more crowded, not less, and that the decision unfairly targets students and parents who followed a legitimate district process. Clearly, there are ways to address overcrowding at Briarwood that do not impact current families, including several solutions that were presented in the survey sent to Briarwood parents a couple weeks ago. We implore the board to reconsider this unfair decision. That is no solution to the overcrowding problem. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, at this time, we will move on to the approval of minutes for the special meeting of April 28, 2014. Thank you, Mrs. Neber.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries 7-0. Approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of April 28.
Still move.
Thank you, Mrs. Mac. Thank you, Mrs. Bisfield. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries 7-0 for the special meeting of May 12.
I'll move.
Thank you, Dr. Denny.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Levin's. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. For the adoption of the agenda.
I'll move.
Thank you, Dr. Denny.
Second.
Mrs. Neber, okay. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries 7-0. We'll move on to approval of routine business by consent. Is there any item that any member of the board would like removed from the consent agenda? Mrs. Neber?
I would move approval of routine business by consent.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Mac. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries 7-0. Dr. Chapman, I think there was a comment you wanted to make.
Thank you very much. As you are aware, this evening, the board has approved that Dr. Crane be granted a leave of absence. Her, she is moving to Greece, and while we pity her, we will miss her. Her husband has an outstanding opportunity to work there, and he is from Greece, so she'll be going with her husband, despite our pleas to stay. But tonight, you have also appointed her replacement. And so I'd like to introduce Steve Low to you, or reintroduce Steve Low to you. He is not here this evening. He had a commitment with his family, and I told him that you would be understanding to that. But I wanted to share a little bit about his background, so you can congratulate him and look forward to welcoming him back to the West community, or the West High School community. He's been in the West community at Comanche Elementary School as principal for the past three years. Prior to that, he was an associate principal at Shawnee Mission East High School for six years. In 1993 is when Steve joined Shawnee Mission as a teacher at Westridge Middle School. He then taught at Shawnee Mission West High School as a language arts and AP instructor for eight years, and that was his last appointment as a teacher. So coming back to the principal position at Shawnee Mission West, we'll be coming home for Steve Low. In his broad range of experience as an educator, he also brings to this position a perspective of a parent in the West community. He has four children attending the schools in the Shawnee Mission West area, two of whom will be students at Shawnee Mission West next year. They were excited about their dad being in the hallways, but the younger of the two said it was going to be fine as long as he didn't stalk her in the hallways. So Steve has committed to not do that, and instead, the associate principals will take on that responsibility on his behalf. He has, his educational background includes a bachelor's degree in education and a master's degree, both from the University of Kansas. The staff were very excited to welcome Steve back as their staff member, colleague, and principal, and to share the future with a longstanding administrator and colleague in the West area. So next time you're at West, please congratulate Steve Low. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Chapman. Okay, we will move on to the action items. Oh, is administrative services, oh, one, approval of middle school athletics. Dr. Henson?
We have been discussing with you for several months, this possibility. You have this agreement before you, is approval of the middle school athletics sponsorship agreement with First National Bank. And so they are contributing $25,000 to our initiative with middle school athletics annually. And so we're really pleased to have this partnership with First National Bank, and certainly will put their $25,000 to great use. This is the agreement with them that's before you this evening.
Okay. Very good. Is there any questions or comments?
Move.
Thank you, Dr. Denny. Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of, oh, one, approval of middle school athletics, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries 7-0. Okay, and then oh, two, Dr. Henson?
Several months ago, we were approached by KU Sports Medicine in relation to the possibility of them providing services, trainer services to our students, and so we put forth an RFP. We have been utilizing the services of Shawnee Mission Medical Center for a number of years. We do not have concern about the services of Shawnee Mission Medical Center. They provide a great service to us. However, KU Sports Med came in with a proposal that is very attractive to us. It does provide some additional services in relation to concussion testing and also some cardiac testing that is not provided currently. And they also have the ability to provide some financial incentives to us, which are great. So they're willing to lock in a price for the next five years. So they're willing to lock in a price for the next five years. And so it's a great proposal from KU Med. So a proposal tonight is to train the, is to change the services that are provided to our students for sports medicine and athletic training services from Shawnee Mission Med Center to KU Sports Medicine. And again, I want to reiterate, we don't have any concerns. It's gone really well with Shawnee Mission Medical Center. We appreciate their services, but this is really a phenomenal proposal from KU Sports Med, and it does provide, we believe, additional services to our students that are not currently being provided.
Very good.
I would move approval of the superintendent's recommendation of a vote.
Second. Thank you, Mrs. Bisfield and Mrs. Neber. Is there any other discussion or comments?
I just have a quick comments. Somebody said earlier to me that we work very quickly here, and I just wanted to tell everyone that we have background information that we get in advance. We have the contract. You can go online, you can read the contract. We read a lot of documents before each of our meetings, so we try to be very prepared to vote. Just wanted to explain that.
Correct. Thank you, Mrs. Mac. Any other discussion? All those in favor of Sports Medicine Athletic Training Services by KU Med, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries seven-zero. Thank you very much. We will move on to Q1 action. Dr. Henson.
This is a very busy night for Mr. Russell Knapp, so I'm going to ask Mr. Knapp if he will come back to the podium. As you are keenly aware, the legislature passed a bill that has an impact on us in several different aspects, and this is one of those aspects. So we refer to it as the LOB. It's the Local Option Budget, and so Mr. Knapp's going to explain what that means to us.
So this is a resolution that we're asking you to approve tonight. As we talked earlier in our budget workshop, this allows us to increase our LOB cap 2% to 33%. This was a House Bill 2506 that was passed this spring. Since we're already at 31%, all it requires is a resolution on your part, and it's only good for this coming, coming school year, 1450. After that, if we want to continue at 33% in the future, it requires a mail ballot election.
Any questions for Mr. Knapp?
I would move approval of the Local Option Budget Resolution.
Thank you, Mrs. Bisfield.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries seven-zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Knapp. Are you still standing there for?
Still standing.
For Q2 as well, regarding the approval of the capital outlay fund resolution.
Yeah, this is also that was passed in House Bill 24, 2506 this spring. This does two things. It gives us continuous and permanent authority to do an annual tax levy of eight mils, and it also expands the use of capital outlay to include uniforms, acquisition of software, and to maintain and equip buildings. So this is subject to protest petition, so we would have to publish this in the paper, wait 40 days, and then it would become valid. So we're asking for you to approve that tonight.
Okay, very good. So moved, Mrs. Mac, thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Levens. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries seven-zero. Thank you. And third and final, action Q3, approval to amend the budget.
Yeah, that's, that was your original notice of hearing.
Right.
And again, this is the current budget.
Correct.
And we're just increasing our budget authority with the Special Education Fund, about $200,000, and our capital outlay fund, $22 million, and the capital outlay is from, for the purchase of $18 million worth of Apple devices that we decided to do after we published our original budget way back in August.
Very good.
So. Move approval.
Second. Thank you, Dr. Denny and Mrs. Goodburn. Any other discussion on this?
I would just note, again, we had a budget workshop at 5:30 and discussed this for almost an hour, so just wanted to note that.
Thank you, Mrs. Mac. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries seven-zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Knapp. Move on to action by the superintendent, R1, revised board policy.
This is the second reading of EGAEA.
I let you say that one.
And so this is in relation to our acceptable use on the policy, second reading. Again, you'll have the guidelines as your next item, so policy and guidelines. A couple of comments. One, as you know, we submitted to KASB last August in relation to a comprehensive policy audit, and we now understand that we will receive that audit sometime in June, in the month of June. So that has not been received yet. However, in order to get these policies and guidelines in our handbooks and get them published, we have to move forward in that regard. We've really tried to look as well, how do you make this, this policy and guideline with less of a hervage? How do you make it more succinct? And without being out language, we've found that really impossible to do. And so we have before you the second reading of this revised policy, and again, it's EGAEA.
Move approval. Thank you, Mrs. Levens.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Denny. Is there any further discussion about the acceptable use policy? Mrs. Bisfield?
I do have one question, and I think it's been settled, that apparently our high school journalism classes were concerned with something in this policy because Kansas is fairly lenient on the high school students being able to do certain things. It's my understanding that there's a federal, there are regulations from the federal government that sort of supersede some of what are Kansas journalism.
Two answers. One is the policy does state all applicable state laws that would supersede, and so if any law would change at any time, we don't have to go back and change our policy. And so those applicable state laws do trump anything in that regard.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries seven-zero. Move on to R2, revised board policy.
It's the guideline that goes along with the policies.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Mac.
Second.
Mrs. Neber? Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion on this guideline? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries seven-zero. R3, Dr. Henson.
Going to ask Mrs. Fortmiller to join me at the podium tonight. I'm recommending to you a boundary change in relation to Brookridge Elementary School. So this literally takes a portion of the current attendance boundary for Brookridge Elementary School. The proposal is to move it to Deemer Elementary School, and so Mrs. Fortmiller's going to walk us through some of the information tonight.
Next year at Brookridge, moving this section, and you have the map in your materials, as well as the transfers from Brookridge, we would be able to relieve the building of the high capacity that they have had in the past few years. We would anticipate in our projections right now that we could staff for three full-time kindergartens. Oh, you want me to be there, okay. Of approximately 17.67 children. We know that we don't have .67 children, but we would know it would be 17 and 18. First grade, we would have five sections, which would be about 20 students. Four sections in second grade, about 19 and 20. In third grade, we would have three sections, which would be at 25 and 26. In fourth grade, we would have three sections at 24 and 25. In third grade, we would have three sections, or excuse me, in fifth grade, we would have three sections at 20, and in sixth grade, we would have three sections at 22.23. We also have included two halftime kindergarten sections, which is what we have done this year with a morning and an afternoon kindergarten, which would both be at 19 if those actually fill up. And we would have to see, kindergarten's very elusive for us. So from this year, we had 29 sections, we would have 25 sections. Deemer, the school that would receive the students, this year had 13 sections, and next year, they would move to 18 sections. In kindergarten, they would have three with 18 and 19 students. First grade, second grade, third grade, fourth, first, second, and third grade, excuse me, would all have three. First grade would have 17 and 18, second grade would have 19, third grade would have 19, fourth grade would continue, would have two sections with 22, and fifth and sixth grade would each have two sections of 23, and sixth grade, 24.
Very good. Any questions for Mrs. Fortmiller?
A couple of points of clarification. We will provide transportation, and so as you can see on your map, the area that is adjacent to the Deemer attendance area, as you know, Deemer has been discussed for several years for potential closure, so this certainly eliminates that discussion for closure of John Deemer Elementary School. And so that's the area that we've outlined for you, that we're proposing to you to recommend the boundary change to go from Brookridge Elementary to John Deemer Elementary School. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Neber. Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries seven-zero. Okay, and we'll move to S action, consideration of membership of the Kansas Association of School Boards.
You have before you that consideration. We belong currently to the Kansas Association of School Boards. Certainly, my recommendation is that we would continue our membership with KASB.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Denny.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Levens. Any other discussion or comments?
I have one question. I just want to make sure that we're still using, I know we have our own legal team that works for us, but I want to make sure that we're still using the Legal Assistance Service Fund. I know that staff members have said that they occasionally call KASB for legal service. I just want to make sure that we're still utilizing.
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries seven-zero. We will move on to reports to the board. Board financial report.
This is your monthly financial report. It's for the month of April. There isn't anything certainly outstanding in this report. I know you've had a lot of financial information starting at 5:30 tonight, but again, there's nothing outstanding in the routine monthly report we bring to you.
Does any board member have any questions about the monthly financial report? Okay, very good. Then we will move on to board comments. Mrs. Neber?
Thank you. I know we voted earlier tonight on the LOB, and I'm hoping that the people in our audience understand that this is only really a one-year vote by the board in that if we have it the second year, it will go to a vote of the people. That's what was in the legislation. So the community has the ability to vote after this year, if we retain that 33% from the 31% where we are now. So it wasn't just an arbitrary, we're going to raise this. It does have a vote by the people in its second year. So just so that you all are aware that it could go away as quickly as it came tonight, unfortunately. So anyway, and we did not address any of the Briarwood issues tonight, right? I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, because I know we still have a lot of Briarwood parents out here waiting, and we did not address anything on this board agenda with Briarwood.
It was not on the agenda tonight for Briarwood.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Right. Thank you very much. Any transfers are an administrative decision. Mrs. Mac?
At our 5:30 board workshop, which I would invite you all to come in the future, tonight, we did the budget workshop, and then we also had a presentation by the Communications Department, and I just wanted to really salute that department. We had all our graduations outside this year, and we had beautiful evenings, rather chilly, and I had several comments from many grandparents who really appreciated that they could actually stay at home and still watch their grandchildren graduate because it was too chilly or they were unable to come. Even heard across the country that grandparents and other relatives were able to enjoy the graduations. It is a huge endeavor for your department, and you do an outstanding job, and I just wanted to compliment you on that.
Thank you very much, and I want to be sure that we also say a special thank you to the IS Department, many of their staff, because we have a pretty, we have a very small staff, and we pull from our wide-area network team and others to fill in, as well as some of our graphic designers, but we couldn't do it if we didn't have some additional volunteers to be able to do two live productions a night for three nights. So our thanks to them for stepping up and working extra hours so that we can honor our graduates and be a part of that, so thank you.
It was a very special night, thank you.
It's great. We have even had our clerk of the board on the TV.
On camera.
Recording at graduation, so it truly is a district effort, and everybody can cross their little, they're cross-trained in lots of ways, so.
Very good, thank you. Any other comments? Mrs. Levens?
I just wanted to chime in on the experience at graduation. It's a tremendous experience to get to stand on the dais and welcome those graduates. It's just spectacular to see all that promise walking across the stage and to shake that hand, and thank you for those of you, to those of you who shared that opportunity this year, because sometimes I'm just a spectator as an at-large board member, but it was tremendous honor and a great, a great evening, several evenings that we had with the graduates. So congratulations to all the teachers, to the district administrators. It's the culmination of a lot of hard work on those evenings, so it's a wonderful celebration.